Good evening, everybody. It is 5:30, so we'll call special session of the city council to order. And to begin, if we could all stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, could you take the role?
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rowe?
Here. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moves.
Second.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Gallagher Wage Study Presentation Recommendation Received Presentation From Mike Verdorn. Hopefully, I pronounced it right. Okay. Principal Public Sector and Higher Education with Gallagher with open discussion to follow.
And Barb, I believe you're taking this?
Yes, I'll just introduce Mike. So Mike is with Gallagher and Maria is also here. These are the two that have been working the most on this project. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mike. He's going to go through a PowerPoint presentation that you all have copies of. That way you can write any notes or anything and we'll go through questions that you have.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Also on the phone, we have a senior consultant with our team, Alan Johnny. He just couldn't be here in person with us. He'll be a key contact for Barb and the city going forward as well. As I'm working my, I'm transitioning, I'm moving away from Gallagher. So we want to make sure we transfer as much institutional knowledge as possible with Maria and Alan and going through all the reports, all the data itself as well. But we want to have a chance to kind of get through what we have now and of the great work that has come to this point. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here, but also the rescheduling because I could not make it in person the other night and I appreciate that as very, very much. Please stop me if you have any questions throughout all this. I want to make sure, thank you, that we get those addressed. And if I might be getting to that answer in a little bit, I'll just let you know. It's like, hey, we're going to get to that point. Let's talk about it then. But please stop me if you have any questions. I'd rather have this be a conversation in that way, not just me spouting off the stuff that we've done. So what we'll talk about is just what the study is, what the overall goals are, what the classification portion of it is, and then what the compensation portion is. Because it is a twofold project as well. And then from that, what the overall findings and recommendations are. So the first one is updated classification structure. Classification structure talks about what are the different types and levels of work at any given organization. So what are those bodies of work like finance or maintenance or HR, IT? What are those different bodies of work and the levels of work that are present? And try to get that information from the folks that are doing the work so it reflects the now, but then also think about what the future is going to be as well. So have that classification framework that supports ongoing internal equity, which is then merged in with the external data on an ongoing basis to make sure you have internal and external concepts there. Collecting the market data from comparable public sector organizations and published surveys, which are going to represent the overall private sector as well. Because we do need to recognize that. Taking that information, building a salary structure that balances the internal equity within the city, within the jobs and the levels of work, and then the external competitiveness, and also look at rolling into the longevity payments so people aren't losing out on it. But setting up a salary structure with pay ranges that people move through to reflect that. Many times in our experience, longevity payments can be not administered effectively or efficiently or consistently in those manners. And making sure you have the framework within that to operate. Have a salary structure implementation cost options that help to mitigate current and future pay compression. Pay compression is going to be an ongoing issue. It's always occurring. It matters on how you manage it and how you can mitigate that within the framework of the structure. Have competitive pay practices regarding market premium, certification pay, acting supervisor pay, temporary assignments. What should those look like and what has worked and what hasn't worked? And then the administrative guidelines for ongoing maintenance. The system is not just a one and done. Needs to be maintained and updated and continuously reviewed. It's meant to have, for the city, for Barb, to have an efficient management structure for that so they can partner with the different department heads and say, hey, you need some new levels, new roles. How do we get that into our structure and not having to start anything from scratch at the beginning? So the first step here, we talked about the job script. There's a quick executive summary here. Current had city 97 job titles that were all out there. We took that information from the questionnaires. I'll get into that in more detail. 27 different series, 73 classifications that exist. The city is highly competitive when it comes to actual salaries at that middle point in the market. And we'll get into more detail that. The salary ranges at the minimum are competitive with the market. The midpoint slightly competitive, slightly behind, and then the maximum significantly behind the market. So the minimums have moved up. It's that top end and moving people through the pay ranges that are misaligned. And that's overall structure. We're trying to make sure the structure itself is competitive across the minimum midpoint and maximum. So we look at a salary structure options, one based on the 50th percentile and then one based on the 75th percentiles. That's a key decision that needs to be made here. We have a recommendation for that. Implement the salary structure based on current placement tenure in that job title and what that cost is and what the implementation plan can look like.
Can I stop you first? Just a quick question. So you said that we're highly competitive with the comparable at the 50th percentile. So that 75 percentile, is that the midpoint or the maximum? Would that be the midpoint then in that next line? If you go back.
Oh, I'm sorry. I hit the button.
I apologize. Where it says identify the city is, and then salary ranges, it talks about competitive at minimum and midpoint. Is that midpoint the 75th percentile or is that going to be more where we're misaligned at?
Yeah, right now with the actual pay, it's a little bit not misaligned, but somewhat competitive, but behind at the 75th percentile. And I'll get into like kind of the structure design here in a minute. There's a couple of visuals that will kind of help with that as well. So yeah, we want the midpoint to kind of be closer to that 75th percentile so you can start people at a competitive level and progress up to that point. So we'll get into that here a little bit as well. There it goes. So the first point for us to start any one of these projects is make sure we understand the jobs. Now, we do these types of projects across the country in different municipalities, cities, county, state governments. So we understand public sector jobs, the nature of that work, but every organization is going to structure them differently. They're going to have different levels, different designs within those jobs. So we got that information from the employees. We really appreciate that. We went through those many, many times. We keep going back to those to make sure we're matching the right information. Anything we had about 129 that were completed. Some of those are group questionnaires, so it might be multiple employees that are part of those questionnaires. We really appreciate all that content. They're reviewed by the supervisors. They have an opportunity to comment on it. They're not changing any original content. It's just adding some initial content. They were reviewed by HR and then ultimately to us. And we went through those numerous times. That was the basis for that overall classification structure that I talked about. So we had series, major occupational areas, career paths, so we identify what those levels are. Have that classification title, a nature of work, minimum qualifications. After that's been finalized, now we're going to be writing up those individual classification descriptions. So 73 of those that we'll be writing as well. Had the titles there. It's just a kind of a greater consistency of job titles across the city. So like an assistant is a certain level, a specialist or a director or a manager is a similar level within the organization. Simplifies the classification structure. So Barb has that tool, that framework to use when they're working with them to say, what level of work do you need? What are the minimum qualifications we'd be looking for, those things? And then you still have position-specific titles. Those may exist, a unique title within a broader classification. For example, at some place we have, hey, we have an IT analyst. This is going to be the security part of it. This is going to be the programmer part of it or the database analyst within it. Might have some unique titles for a position, but within a broader classification itself.
Sorry, can I interrupt real quick? Can you, I understand the 73 job classification titles, but what is the series? What's that exactly?
Yeah, so the series is going to be like that body of work. We have the finance series that might have three or four classifications in it. Thinking about what that is, we have like the water, the operator, equipment operator series that have different levels.
Thank you.
Yep. And that may be right now, and then five years from now, it could be 27 series and 87 classifications based upon the changes that happen. But it's meant to, though, we also worked with Barb to develop something like this. This is one piece of it. There's about 18 different kind of overall classifications that when we developed the classification structure, we kind of said, here's a framework for future growth within it that allows for those rooms. This mirrors over to the salary structure. So we say, hey, here's a level of work. Here's a descriptor of that level of work. There are going to be classifications that might be in that level within a series. You need the next level higher. Here's what differentiates that level from this level within that. What is the next responsibility level, this framework? This is a starting point. You're going to continue, Barb will continue to add content to this as it's more and more refined for the city based upon the realities that exist as well. But this helps to say, here's the level of work that I need as a supervisor. What is that level? Where does that equate to within the salary structure? Because we may not be able to get market data on all the jobs to be able to slot it into the right grade. We may have to use some of that internal alignment to say, we're looking for a similar level to this. Here's the grade that it would be placed into in comparison to the other positions. And we have done that as well because we do not have market data for all the jobs of the city. But we have a great sample of what those jobs are. So we'll get into that here too. So that was the first part of that classification part, understanding the work, getting the structure and the framework in place. During that time also, we have collecting market data, survey data, those two different sources. Build a structure that balances internal equity with the external competitiveness at the city. First one is we identified benchmark jobs. We identified 48 benchmark jobs. They represent 75% of the overall employee population. That is a great representation. We want to at a minimum represent just about 50% and we are exceeding that based upon our requirements for ourselves. 48 benchmark jobs also represents a vast majority of the overall number of classifications that we have as well. So we have a good representation of the different bodies of work, levels of work within, across the city. Okay? These are the list of jobs that we did get market data for. And I know those are written in there and it's kind of small up here, but they, the whole idea is that we want to represent the different hierarchy levels and in proportion to the employee population. So we're not saying, hey, let's get all of the management level jobs and fewer of this level jobs. But it represents kind of in that bell curve distribution in a way. It's meant to be that representative sample. So that we can take this data and look at this and develop an overall pay structure.
These were selected by an advisory team. So we, whomever of our employees wanted to participate in it. They came in, sat in a meeting and went through all of these jobs and said, these are the jobs that we feel are benchmark jobs that we could go out, we could find out salary data or we could, you know, it's equivalent. This is what we want to go out. So while Gallagher did that work, these were jobs that ultimately that our employees chose to say, these are the benchmark jobs.
And in a similar vein too, on the labor market, we developed a custom survey, mark survey that went out to participants. Those 15 participant, participating organizations were identified as well with, by that advisory team, other municipalities, other organizations. We sent it out to those 15. We made follow-up calls. Barb helps us with follow-up calls as well and make sure that we try to get as much data as we can. We received surveys back from eight of those organizations and another two organizations. They had enough information on their websites for us to be able to get what we would say valid and defensible data. We're trying not to match just job title to title because sometimes those are not direct matches. We don't know the content of that. Now, you can do that for some jobs with like firefighter, police officer, sergeant, but other positions, even if it's an accountant to an accountant, it may be a very different level of work. And we don't have the description to validate that. We would not feel comfortable getting that data. But overall, in both of these, it represents, it exceeds our typical responses. We usually get about 50 to 60% back right now. That's kind of where we're at with regards. There's a lot of surveys that are out there. HR departments are stretched thin. Anyway, we're asking them to participate, help us out. We got 75% of the organizations represented. That's a really good number based on our experience here. And then we need to have, and we need to have at least five data points for every single job in order to summarize. That is the compliance with the Sherman Antitrust Department of Justice requirements. So you're not comparing just city of Atumwa to the city of Altoona for that pay. We need to have a representative sample in it. So we have data of 45 of the 48 jobs. So again, really good data set to work with. These are the organizations that we, that responded to the survey. On the left, in the middle there, they did not, oh, we data mined from them. They had enough information, descriptions, contracts, pay structures on their websites for us to be able to get that information back. The other ones did not participate and we tried to find as much as we possibly could online. Enough information is not there. We may have a title and a pay rate, but we cannot effectively summarize that. It doesn't meet the standards within that. But overall, still sufficient data in order to make, draw the overall conclusions. And the goal is to create a pay structure of a minimum midpoint maximum that represents the trend of the market. So. So we did phone calls, emails, follow-up, all that information to get that. Once we get that data, we review that to make sure we understand it because sometimes they send it to us in hourly or annual format or number of annual hours of part-time and sometimes the minimum is higher than the maximum. We have to follow up and we make sure that's all right. The other data that we collected outside of the custom survey, published survey sources. So Gallagher, we purchased many different salary surveys on an annual basis. Mercer, Willis Towers Watson, Comp Data and Economic Research Institute are four of the major surveys that are out there. Especially those first three are surveys that are conducted on an annual basis nationwide. But we're able to get different data cuts that exist. Now, within those surveys, you're typically not able to get a Atumwa data cut or a Southeast Wisconsin, Southeast Iowa cut or anything like that. But you can get a state of Iowa cut or a North Central or a Midwest data cut. And in those, we're take, get that information, make sure we're adjusting it to the cost of labor that exists here as well. And I'll talk a little bit about that here. So Economic Research Institute is the gold standard when we're thinking about cost of labor differentials. Because an accountant is going to be paid more in the city of Tacoma than it is in the city of Des Moines than it is in the city of Atumwa. And so those cost of labor differentials, you can adjust it to make sure it reflects that local market in that way. Many organizations that have multi-presences around this country, they're going to use that to adjust their pay structures effectively and make sure they're paying what needs to be paid in that area itself. So we utilize that site and that information to make sure we have that in there. And we use the cost of labor differential that is going to have a more consistent trend to it than cost of living. Cost of living is sometimes going to be status quo, not right now. Sometimes they're going to go up extreme, but it's going to be much more volatile within there. When we worked on a project in Western North Dakota in 2011, 2012, it was one of the most expensive places to live in the entire country. Now it's not. So the cost of labor, different, living differential will go up and down. Cost of labor will have a very different trend to it. So. All right. So again, we matching eight, trying to match 80% of the job content. That's why those descriptions are so important. We need to make sure we have those five data points that exist for every job. It was dispatcher, director of airport operations, pre-treatment coordinator, that we just did not have enough data pour to be able to summarize those three jobs. But again, getting data for 45 of the 48 exceeds our typical levels. That's why we pick a high number of benchmark jobs so you can get data on a good percentage of that. Still represents over 70% of the overall employee population. Aging that salary data, we have, market data itself is always imperfect when you get it. It's always dated. It's always older than what it is. So we need to age that forward based upon what the market trends are. We have aged it based upon a 3.5% annual adjustment for the actual pay, 2.5% for the salary structure. It's slightly conservative, but that is in alignment with what the trends are. We utilize a reorganization called World at Work. That is the professional compensation organization. They do an annual salary budget survey of thousands of organizations across the country. And that was what the projected, the 2020, we're in 23, 22, actual adjustment was when moving that pay forward itself. Okay? So then this has a little bit more about that adjusting that salary data. So we might have to lower certain data points. We might have to increase certain data points to make sure they are in fact effective here within the city of Atumwa based upon the labor market conditions. We looked at both of those with and without those geographic adjustments as well. And recommend using the geographic adjustments because there are some of those organizations that their, their cost of labor is lower and it needs to be increased to make sure it's effective here as well. So we want to make sure we have an even playing field with regards to the overall market data. When we're talking about salaries themselves, we're looking at the different competitive levels. Anything plus or minus 5% is considered highly competitive because you have a little bit of margin for error within the comparisons itself. So that's where we want to be. Competitive 5 to 10%. When you start getting over that 10%, over 15%, you have some misalignment with the market. But that misalignment could be explained as well. For example, in the custom survey, it could show that, hey, the city of Atumwa is paying 25% over what that 50th percentile of the market is. But you look at it and say, yeah, the two people that we have in that job have been here for over 30 years each. Therefore, we should be paying. That explains what that differential is. Or the two people we have here have just been hired into that position. We're going to be lower than what that middle point of the market is as well. So those are our indicators that we have. This is that kind of that basis. Councilmember Galloway, just a little bit with regards to the question here for the 50th, 75th percentile. When we're comparing it, we have the 50th percentile, that middle point in the market, the 75th, a little bit higher in there. We want to make sure we're trying to encompass that full market in the way that we're building a pay structure. Okay? We look at those percentiles and not the averages because the averages could get skewed higher or lower. We want to find that middle point in the market with that 75th percentile. And the 75th percentile does not mean it's 25% higher than the 50th because the bell curve distribution for each one of those jobs is going to be different. For example, an accountant benchmark job has usually has a very tight bell curve distribution. IT analysts might have a wider distribution on the salaries that exist in there just because of the nature of kind of the ambiguity of what those titles are, the roles and the market rates that exist. So the 75th percentile is always going to be a little bit different in relation to the 50th based upon the job. That's why we want to look at the overall trend as well. So these are the numbers that we found. We had the first one of that 50th because we want to make sure, how do you compare against that? Overall, 1.1% below. Across those 45 benchmark jobs, that is an aggregate difference. What is the city paying? What's the market paying? What's that percentage difference? There are going to be some jobs there that are more than that, that are going to fluctuate with that. That's why we take that cumulative data set to develop the overall pay structure. And you can see here that the minimum, you are highly competitive with that minimum level, just a little bit higher. But then as you move into your pay ranges, your pay ranges at the midpoint and the maximum are misaligned with the market. So the history, as I understand it, has been that, hey, we're moving that minimum level up to keep up with that pay rate, but not moving through the pay structure. This is a very typical result that we see with a lot of our clients that we're maintaining this, but the pay range becomes misaligned. So there's some pay compression that's going to exist if people are not progressing through the pay structure so that you're paying the same rate for people that have been here eight years and people have been here one or two years and not having enough differential. And those are one, some of the things that we're looking to resolve within the overall pay structure itself as well. So again, some of those individual jobs could be more off the market, but those are individual factors that might exist either in the jobs you matched from the surveys. It could be like, hey, everybody that's in this job and in our other comparables have been in that job for over 20 years. Yes, we are going to be below the market. But then if you did this study two years from now, maybe half of those people retire or move on to something else. And also the market has flipped a little bit and it might be different. So again, we're looking at those overall trends, individual performance, individual aspects of those jobs on the individual position basis, but overall highly competitive. So what our goal is, is that looking at the two different structure options. One of them based on the 50th percentile, one based on the 75th percentile. The whole idea there is we want to make sure that you encompass the market and what is the right competitive level to be at based upon the realities in which you also operate. What are those starting rates and where do we need to be in there? So if you base a pay structure on the 50th percentile, typically you put that at the midpoint. And then your range will kind of encompass below that, at that and above that. What we're experiencing now with a lot of our clients across the country as well, even locally, and then we do a lot of stuff within Southern Minnesota too, is sitting there, they're having to start people higher. And then you're having to have this pay compression as people move into the range a little bit. So starting closer to that 50th percentile is more what the reality is right now. To make sure you can bring people in and progress up through the range. That's why that 75th base percent structure in our recommendation is going to be the right solution. Sets you up for immediate kind of competitiveness, does not impact current pay ranges where you're not having pay ranges that would be down lower than what the current ranges are. Because we are looking at the full structure of all of those jobs. The one group that has a different structure would be the firefighter structure because of the different nuances of the hours and everything like that. That has to be dealt separately. It's very typical. But within that, we're trying to create the structure. In the past, with many different union groups and everything, this job, group of jobs is looked at, then this group, then this group, then this group. So the structure and the foundation, the formation of those ranges is going to look different. When you're trying to look at them all the same and get them into a uniform pay structure to ease the overall administration and have the consistency of the administration and support the ongoing internal equity, you're going to have a little bit of difference. The 75th percentile sets it up to be at the best spot. But then also, it could be in the future years, maybe you, financial issues, financial capabilities is different. You know that the structure was set up slightly higher. And you can be like, hey, you know what? This year, we can't move our structure, but we can move our employees through the range. Allows you to have options for the coming years as well. So that's why 75th percentile is the one that we would recommend to look at.
Can you go back?
Yeah.
So help me understand something. So I think you said the 50th percentile or that 50th base is our reality. However, a solution would be the 75th base. So help me understand what you're saying. Because when I hear reality, I hear the reality of our like financial situation? Or is it the reality that we're in currently with our pay structure?
It's kind of more of a combination of the reality that you're currently with the pay structure, but then also with the reality of the market is of what those starting pay rates have to be and where that pay is starting is closer aligned with the 50th percentile. So you'd want your minimum starting point to be more closely aligned with what that is. So you have room for employees to progress through that range. So you don't have that pay compression issue because in many of our clients, the pay compression is this underlying cause that you don't see the impacts of until people leave or performance or those, the ones that have a significant price tag to them as well.
I appreciate that clarification because reality to us may mean something completely different than what it did. So, thank you.
You're exactly right. Thank you. So within each of those structures, we took the market data itself for all of those 45 jobs. So in the 50th base structure, we said, what is the lowest 50th percentile of the market data? Let's put that at pay grade one. And then we'll do a percentage increase up from that and use the 50th percentile data to slot the jobs appropriately. Okay, so it's like the 50th percentile, the accountant was $50,000 a year. This midpoint over here was $52,000. We're going to take that and slot it in there. And we did the same with the 75th percentile to say, what's the lowest 75th percentile data point? Put that at pay grade one, take that midpoint and have a 10% increase to make sure we got up to the highest 75th percentile. And then slot those jobs in to the right range based upon the 75th percentile. We did that. We worked with Barb to go back through and say, what about those jobs that are not benchmark jobs? That we don't have market data for? We need to look at what that alignment is using that classification structure framework as well as just the internal knowledge of what those jobs are that, hey, in the past, these five jobs are all in the same pay grade. You put these three into grade seven. Let's put the other two into grade seven as well because that internal equity was appropriate before. And if it wasn't, how do we adjust that? Does this job need to go up a higher grade or a lower grade? So that is where the art and the science meet with any of these projects is you have the science, you have all the data. But then you have the art that's going to be like, okay, how do we make this data fit? How do we make sure that we can use this going forward and it's going to have the right look and feel for the city of Atumwa? So we had, then we created 13 steps within each of those based upon a 30% range spread. And that 13 steps is picked because we want those steps to be about 3% each year over year. They're even dollar amounts. So the steps between one to two is the same dollar amount as steps 12 to 13. So the percentage impact is a little bit different, but if you think about if the job is in the same pay range, well, the adjustment that a first-year person gets of, say, it's $1,000, it's going to have a higher impact on me because I'm making less annual salary. So it's a higher percentage, but we're still both getting a step because we're doing the same job. So the dollar amount is the same within the framework of the structure. So the midpoint is set at step seven of that structure as well. So this is, I just talked about this a little bit. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. This is salary range placement. So we took those jobs, said, what is the most closely aligned midpoint to that 50th percentile or 75th percentile? Slotted those jobs and then again, worked with Barb to review the non-benchmark jobs. Where were they placed in the old structure? Was that right in the comparison of where those jobs are? Looking at the new pay range structure and the old structure so that none of the pay range levels went down. We don't want to put people into, employees or jobs into a new pay range that is significantly lower unless we can defend that based upon the data or the internal alignment. Now, we're trying to, that's another reason why the 75th percentile is ideal because in the 50th one, how many jobs do we have that would? Yes. Yes. And then the 75th percentile, I think there are only two. Yeah, that were slightly lower than what the current starting rate is based upon this structure.
Struggled hiring in and we've heard that, you know, we've had potential candidates say, well, that's just not enough money was some of those positions. So again, we had to make sure that we know that we've got some hiring issues because of that starting wage and some of those. and some of those positions themselves. So we had to look at that seventy-fifth percentile.
Yeah, and that kind of reflected what are the reality of the local competitive levels for that starting pay was closer aligned with that. So we need to make sure the structure can address those concerns as well.
If you don't mind me asking, when you're doing the comparison between these jobs specific to the steps along the way, how did you discriminate the, the classification? So if, if the city of Atamwa, each of the jobs has six steps, you're comparing to Mason City, we'll say, or, or Muscatine that has nine steps and their salary range for any given job. How do you discriminate what the differences between those steps?
That's, that's a good question and we're trying, that's one of the reasons why we try to look at what the just overall minimum midpoint and maximum is going to be. Because many of the times those union groups are negotiating the, because those have to be negotiated. How you progress through the range, what the starting point is, what the top point is and how many steps are it's going to be. So we have worked with some clients saying, hey, maybe they want less steps from the minimum to the midpoint. We want to move people through faster to get here and then it might be a little bit slower after that target point. So we have the starting point here of, let's do thirteen steps, that's even across minimum to midpoint to maximum. It's kind of an overall trend in different places of the country. Like in, I know in California, they usually have like four steps. That's it. People go four steps, four years and you're at the maximum. Other places I know around here where it's like somewhere between nine to fifteen is what we typically see. And so kind of picking what that is, it's a number based upon a trend, but it is also a number that could change within that too. And so we try to think of what it takes to move into be kind of fully competent within a role is usually five to seven years. And that's why we put that seven at the midpoint as well. So another one of those art-science mixes here a little bit. So the fire salary structure, as I said, was the one that is handled separately. The overall framework that exists right now for the rookie firefighter to the master firefighter to the battalion chief, et cetera. That framework is working based upon our knowledge. What we looked at is the market rates and found out for the jobs that we had market data for, the average difference, the overall aggregate difference was six point eight percent below. So he said, let's take the current structure and update it by six point eight percent. Have it, having that be based in that data comparison. So moving that up by six point eight percent is very similar to what we're doing with the overall structure where we found that the overall general structure was six point four percent below at the midpoint. So overall in alignment, trying to be kind of consistent in how we are addressing that market competitive issue for both general government, we call general government positions as well as the fire, fire positions as well. So, and then the implementation plan for fire was say, we're going to keep everybody at the step that they're at. So we took that structure, updated by that percentage, like, hey, you're at step three within this. Let's put you at step three in the new structure as well.
So for this, and this may be a Barb or a Phil question for, like with the fire salary structure, I guess maybe just union in general, are you going to talk about that later? The unions and how this affects, like, are we going to have to open contracts if we end up doing this or?
It's something we'll have to look at. You know, with the unrepresented, I mean, that's, we can make that decision when it comes to with the union. I mean, there's a lot that's going into this. So it's not just that wage structure, but it's also longevity and certification pay. And I mean, kind of the whole structure of it. To make some of those, we would not be able to just do an amendment just because there's so much to it. We would have to look at that and that could be something that we could very well look at doing. It's not out of the question by any means. We'll just have to, once we get to that point.
Yeah, one of the other things that we noticed is when you get into the various positions in a collective bargaining agreement, you have those, those positions are done in, in a bucket. You know, so it's a collective bargain. So positions that are, maybe you have two positions that are at the same pay right now, but when you break out by duties and everything else, they may be in different grades on this schedule. That is something that would have to be, you know, considered, negotiated, whatever else is part of that. So now two positions that were getting the same pay per hour today under this may be at different grades and different levels of pay. And so that's something that because it's collective would have to be agreed to.
So using both of these, we have the fire structure that already maintains a step. For the other broader structure, general government structure, we look at, there's a multitude of options to implement a pay structure and different ways to go about that. We want to make sure we understand what kind of a low cost and a high cost might be. With the low cost is really, let's make sure all employees that may, anybody below the minimum moves up to the minimum. Okay, that brings everybody within that competitive range at least. It's cost effective, but it does not factor in time and position and it creates some pay compression, which is what the intent of this is to mitigate as well. The position and range that we're looking at based on the current time that they have been in that job, where should they be in the pay structure? So it's trying to say, hey, you've been in that job five years, you should be this far at step five within it. Where's your current salary in comparison to step five? So that's going to be implemented differently. It could be that somebody is like, hey, that's a ten cents increase or it could be a thousand dollar increase based upon that. But you're starting to be saying, let's move into this new structure and let's get start from the right point based upon that pay. It's expensive, but it does, it places near the maximum of a new range as well, which is also not ideal, but it also reflects the common data point, the common element that you have for everybody, which is like, hey, we know how long you've been in that title and this is where you should be in that range. These are the kind of the cost parameters that are going to exist. Structure option one, that's the fiftieth base structure. That does kind of go from having from about a thirty-seven thousand dollar annual cost to increase twenty employees up to the minimum, up to just under half a million to increase a hundred and forty employees up to that appropriate spot in the range. This is including all five of those union groups with the different structures that exist as well. And then seventy-fifth based is looking at that from about just over two hundred thousand to about one point two million over that time as well. So it's a significant investment.
So when you're presenting these numbers, are you talking about just cost of salary? Are you talking about cost of compensation?
Salaries, this is base salaries. And this does roll into whatever, all the different current longevity payments that exist that are there. We would be rolling longevity into the overall pay structure because that's what the steps within a structure also represent, are intended to represent is that progression through the range.
So if my head math is correct, total compensation, you might as well just add what? Three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that number? By the time you got your taxes, retirement, things like that? Adding about three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for tax effect, retirement cost, you're probably going to have some additional workers' compensation costs based on the salary levels as well.
Correct. So there are different options when you're implementing this. Many of our clients go through this and they're going to phase this in. You know, in year one, we can do this, in year two, we can do this, in year three, we can do this. Ideally, we like that to be less than three years so that it actually is realized. Sometimes if you go longer than that, it gets forgotten about, council turns over, anything like that and it's not supported going forward. But we want to make sure it gets to the right point. So within this, sometimes I say, hey, we're going to move everybody to the minimum in year one. And then six months later, we're going to look at this. Anybody that's X percentage below that market rate or below the midpoint, we're going to move you closer to that midpoint based upon your time in the job. So we're trying to correct and alleviate some of those based upon the financial capabilities of each one of our clients. The hot, the one point that is a definite recommendation, if you phase in a structure like this, is to make sure that in year two or in year three, well, also in year three, if it goes that far, is to make sure the salary structure is adjusted forward as well. So it's an increased cost in year two and in three because you don't want to end up at, after implementation, having a salary structure that's three years old. So you do have to move that structure forward as well because the market continues to move. So just factoring that aspect into it. So the, we have some highlights here. There's more detailed tables and everything like that, that Barb does have. But overall, the city is aligned with the market for kind of insurance contributions. What the, the cost split between employees and employer has a little bit less for the annual out of pocket than what the, the market does, which is great. You have contribute half of, for the salary, for half of the dental insurance. We have about, some of the participants didn't do any, some of them did a hundred percent. So you're kind of right in the middle, overall in alignment, nothing that was overall concerned with regards to that cost sharing in there. However, we're not benefit plan design experts and what those designs are and what the things cover. And everybody values benefits differently based upon their position in life and perception of what those mean for them. Leave, overall, the city aligns with the market average for employees that have been working for their twenty years, had a number of days, sick days, et cetera, have more days for annual day and holidays, et cetera. So overall, there was nothing that was extremely out of alignment in that area either. There it goes. Retirement, again, public sector, almost all of them are contributing about the same, the same plan, same amount and same, similar, similar design. So we did look at some of these certification pay, acting supervisor pay. These are, I'll be honest, as a certification pay is sometimes, it's usually negotiated into union contracts. If I say, hey, you've got this union contract, you're going to move up to this pay rate. In some instances, that's a salary structure movement, pay adjustment movement. They're typically factored into what that unique job is. The key within this one, within certification pay, bilingual pay, any of those other ones is to ensure that it is required to perform the job responsibilities and how that's applied across the multitude of jobs that exist in an organization. So I got a certification in I T programming, I work in H R. That's not aligned with my job responsibilities in a way, but is that a certification pay? It is difficult, tedious, sometimes prone to inconsistencies in how they're applied, how it's tracked, how it's addressed. Sometimes a supervisor will say, hey, we have all these other certifications that we can get, let's get all those, we can help you pay. Other supervisors are, might not have those as much. But having that simplification of tracking and using the salary structure to address pay with regards to the performance, longevity, tenure within that role is a more consistent way to go. So bilingual pay, again, based on market, bilingual premium is not prevalent that we see. It's in there in some instances that is helpful to do that job within there. They might be paid to do some of the translating on certain parts of a job, reserved for specific jobs. You know, we have, when we worked with Ramsey County up in Minnesota, it was just St. Paul. It's like, yeah, they have some people that have to speak Mon, have to speak Somali, have to speak Spanish within there. That's the requirement of their job. They might, they don't have a bilingual pay within there. So we have a kind of a policy, we have some organizations that value it. It is an organizational decision to say, hey, we do want this. It needs to be there and we see this as a level should be paid for. Sometimes we see usually about a five to ten percent premium if it's chosen to do. It's very hard to find out what that actual dollars are. They don't exist in the surveys really, you have to get into some of those specifically. Filling in for a manager pay premium, basically we would say that has to be something that's done over a long term. Typically over a three week, four week spread. It's not like, hey, this next week they're going to be on vacation for paying for that role. That is what our experience is based upon that acting supervisor role. It's like, this is going to be a part of your job, a significant part of your job for this length of time. And here's what that pay is going to look like over that time. And then once that interim assignment that, you know, supervisor out on F M L A, it comes back, the pay rate goes back to what that normal pay is.
So do you typically see that as, as an adjustment to the pay rate? Or do you typically see that as a stipend to pay?
I think it matters on how, what your H R S system, the payroll system would track that as if they have to add it. If you have an ability to lie, it's a separate line. I think it's easier to add it as a separate line within that to say, hey, here's this pay than then we could take it away and not adjust what the hourly rate is.
Thank you.
Then pay differentials, we did look at shift differentials, callback premium, weekend holiday premium. Those are typical within different shifts, second shift, third shift, whatever those percentages are as well. So those are the most common types of other pay differentials that exist based upon what's necessary. You know, on a holiday pay, it might be double, one and a half, two times that pay based upon the need that exists within there. Sometimes on a shift differential, it could be second shift is fifty cents or a dollar an hour. Third shift is another a dollar and a half, two dollars an hour more based upon the, the rate. But they may be fluctuating for different jobs as well. Salary increases, we did find that the subsidy is slightly behind the market when it came to kind of the COLA adjustments over the last couple of years. That's reflective within the overall data that we summarize as well. So that's what we're trying to alleviate. And set up something so that the salary structure in the future, you're looking at two different adjustments. One is a salary structure adjustment to the minimum midpoint maximum. So in two thousand twenty-four, say, we're going to remove our structure two percent, two and a half percent, whatever that trend is. And then individuals, we, as me as employee, I'm going to move from step two to step three. So therefore my step, that might be a four to five, five and a half percent increase for me as an employee because the structure has moved and I moved through the step, the step structure. That is a balance based upon the financial capabilities of every client. Say, how much can we afford to increase our pay by? Then we look at what that combination is going to be between salary structure adjustment and the movement within the pay structure itself as well.
So just really quick on that, in some of the past clients that you've worked with that have went ahead and, and taken the next step and done these salary adjustments, have you seen them run the current year COLA adjusting, adjustments in tandem with these salary adjustments? Or do they forego the COLA adjustment for the year for the salary adjustment if the salary adjustment is larger than the COLA?
Yeah, I think I'd go with the latter part of your, your question right there where they would typically say, we're not going to do an across the board increase because we're moving into a pay structure now that is in alignment with the market at that point in time. Now, if individuals were not getting an increase or if individuals are going to be over the new maximum, we have recommended say, hey, they might have earned a three percent increase. Can you provide that three percent in a lump sum payment? So you're not compounding the problem of somebody being over the maximum, but you're still providing, say, hey, this is what you would have received, but we don't want to move you further over the maximum in that way.
So I, I just want to home in on one word that you just said there. You said earned. So are you, are you considering the COLA as an earned from tenure? Or are you considering that part of like an merit adjustment?
I guess, yeah, I guess earn might have different connotations and interpretations too. I say that that's what you would have received if this study had not been done.
Okay.
So in some instances, like, hey, the implementation for me as an employee was only point five percent and I would have received this. Sometimes clients will say, hey, we're going to set a minimum threshold that everybody's going to get at least a two percent, two and a half percent pay adjustment. And then we're going to also remedy those that are more out of alignment based upon our implementation method. There it goes. So salary structure option, we do recommend that seventy-fifth percentile base structure. Think that addresses all of the concerns, the market competitive issues, the internal equity and the pay compression issues to also reduce that administration. I think you roll in in those other payment vehicles that might have been used to address the pay progression for individuals. So instead of having longevity, you have those steps that are in there that people move through on those steps. You have the different roles that are in there for the bilingual pay based certification based upon the classification levels. The different level certification for me might enable me if you do a different level job. Therefore, I'm moving up into this next level job where the pay range is different to address some of those certification. Implementation, review the implementation scenarios. I think the time and position scenario addresses all the points that have been brought up to us and the ones that will help you start at the right spot. Ideally, it would have to be phased in most likely over several years. That is a very typical approach. And so you're saying, hey, in year one, we can do this, in year two, we can do this, or divide it over the course of a year as well. So. And then on an ongoing basis, it's not a one and done again, but making sure that we're looking at the internal equity. So we have some clients on an ongoing basis, Alan, Maria, our team would be working with Barb. They could say, hey, once in year one, once you look at this group of jobs. In year two, let's look at this group of jobs and make sure the judge descriptions are updated, make sure they're in alignment correctly. Year three, you look at this and over that three year timeframe, you have reviewed the internal alignment of all the jobs. And then every three to five years, do the compensation study portion of this. Go out to the market, collect the market data, recalibrate the pay structure so that the pay, the structure still looks right. But in between years, you do need to increase that structure by a market trend. And that market trend is going to fluctuate. It could be this, as we experienced last year with the inflation and a lot of other adjustments, it was, it was much higher than it had been in previous years. And those are numbers that Gallagher can help Barb get to look at what those trends are based upon the data sources that we have as well. are based upon the data sources that we have as well. So it is a work in progress, but having those minor steps year over year are going to help. So you don't end up in a situation where it's a significant investment to recalibrate. That is the full presentation. If there's other questions, I can go flip back through
Does anybody have any questions specifically? I guess one thing that I would ask while everybody else is thinking is, in the cities that you looked at and even, uh, maybe even other industries as well, when you look at uh, annual increases that are given to you, to the employees, the, the various organizations, do you see more, um, more of those governmental bodies or, uh, companies using a, a cost of living system for adjusting salaries or a merit based system for adjusting salaries?
In the public sector side, it is more of like a step cost of living type adjustment just because sometimes the inner workings and management for performance evaluation system or stuff like that are very difficult to implement. And those things typically have to be implemented over like a three year span. So you can test and recalibrate the performance metrics that exist.
So I guess in, in hearing that, is there no component built into, um, those salary structures for those employees who are excelling beyond what the, the minimum acceptance of the position is?
Um, within the framework and implementation model that we use, no, we did not factor in performance as to where we put people. But in an open range system, if you, if it did not have steps or even a step structure, any kind of performance management or let's say people have a three tier, you know, you didn't meet, you met, you exceeded. It could be that, um, the exceeded one might move two steps the next year within there. So the step structure can still be used within that as well. I didn't meet, I'm not going to move a step. I stay at step nine, but the salary structure adjusts by 2%. So I might see that, but I'm not moving up the step like if I had met expectations.
So essentially what you're saying is, is the, the merit system is based in how fast they progress through the steps, not necessarily based on tenure, but, but based on the performance.
Yeah. On a going forward basis, that option is available.
Well, and I'm glad to hear that because if, if I'm looking strictly at a COLA system as an employee, I'm going to ask what's the incentive to perform if, you know, especially in a governmental body where people tend to stay through retirement. If, if there's no incentive to do better, then why do better?
So I'm guessing this is the step structure, correct? Okay. So this is a 3%, each step is 3%, correct?
Uh, approximately. So it's a flat dollar amount. So the percent is going to fluctuate. It's going to start higher. The percent is going to be lower of that base pay at the end, but it's a flat dollar amount.
I'm sure I will have lots of questions later on. And I'm sure Barb will be able to answer them. I just need to digest the information first.
So I guess with that, Phil, Barb, do you have any closing comments that you'd like to make?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think as far as next steps, um, and Barb can go into this a little more detail with the deliverables are going to be and the council action that will be requested. Um, this, this was to kind of give you an overview, especially before, uh, Mike leaves. Yeah, I know. Blank. I got it. I got it. Uh, before Mike leaves the company because he has done so much work on this to hear it firsthand and, and give you that opportunity. Um, but I think he's leaving it, it sounds like in good hands as far as if questions come up on the specifics of what the data is that he can, the team can help, uh, answer. Um, we're going to be looking at it and I want to say it's probably 80, 90% done. There's a framework for a compensation plan. These are some of the things that are going to have to be talked about. What are we going to do with some of these other pays that are out there that were kind of, uh, identified here? How is the city going to address that? Are we going to look at a merit based system versus, uh, longevity as it has been? Is there some hybrid? I mean, those are some things that I'd have to go into the detail of that. The ultimate goal, as I see it, um, is to have a framework that is uniform, that is, uh, um, being done. There will be things that are going to come up as far as maybe we have a position three years from now that is just impossible to hire at that rate of pay. This plan should have an, an answer for that and how do we address that? And how does the, the city move forward? Uh, if, those kinds of things that, that we're looking at. Um, so I guess this is the, the first step to kind of get some of those questions, uh, answered or to start thinking about. Uh, I assume we'll have probably at least one more work session to kind of have an opportunity to finalize some of the answers to go into that final document before that comes to an official vote before council. So, um, I think that's just what I wanted to leave everyone with tonight. And I'll turn it over to Barb for other comments.
Yeah. Uh, real quick before Barb, Councilperson Galloway had one more question.
So I do, so, um, Gallagher made these recommendations and maybe this is kind of what you two are going to say. But I guess my question is, is, so at this point you two don't have, or I should, you haven't spoke yet. I apologize. I didn't mean to lump you together. So at this point, these aren't specifically the city's recommendations?
Correct.
Okay. So then I guess, and then I also heard that we have a time, like there's some more work that needs to be done on our end too. Can we have a timeline though? Because I don't want this to be an extended period. Again, um, you know, we all know that this has been a topic of discussion for many, many, many months. And so I do, and I would like to see some form of timeline. So we, we have, you know, um, employees that are kind of wondering and that kind of stuff too.
So the next steps are, we do have a, uh, compensation strategy that council will need to approve. And essentially this will be an overall, you know, are we going to look at 50th percentile, 75th percentile, whatever that looks like. Um, there will be a framework of administration guidelines of, um, when an employee, how do they move through the steps? How do we utilize the steps? Is it promotional? Is it longevity? Whatever that looks like. Um, Gallagher has provided us with a template for all of those. And, um, that will be my next steps to starting working on that. Um, for us then to also work with finance, we've met with Wassim and, and talked about how are we going to pay for all of these? And as we get this data now and we are starting to look at the framework of where each position falls within that framework and what that salary looks like, we then have to decide and we see what that salary would be. We have to figure out how we're going to pay for that. Um, so we have already started having those conversations with Wassim, um, started looking at for the budget, uh, that we had turned in and where does that align? We did a plan, we did plan in the budget that was presented to you all for some of these. Um, of course, not for all of it. We couldn't, we could not forecast all of it, but we did, uh, plan for some of that to be in there. Um, so it's not going to be like, you know, 1.1 million that we just did not budget for or plan for. There is some plans that are there. Um, ideally, we would like to have that on for the next meeting, but unfortunately I'm not going to get all of that done for Chris by tomorrow. So, um, that unfortunately that won't happen. Um, our goal would be to bring to council on the meeting on the 11th of July to have, um, to approve the framework, to approve the, um, the salary structure that you see, that one that you have there in your packet, um, to approve that salary structure, the compensation strategy, um, and those administrative guidelines. That is the goal at this point. Um, and then if we can bring that and if a council approves that, ideally, we would make that retroactive back to July 1. Um, because in past practice, that has always been what we've done is July 1 is when those COLAs go into effect. Um, and we realize that, we recognize that, and we want to try and do what's right for the employees. Um, so while we won't get it to council and have potential approval till July 11th, we want to make sure that we make that retroactive back to July 1st. Um, and then Phil and I, we had spoken today about doing another work session. Once I can get some of that other stuff done, um, so that way we can ask questions about the administrative guidelines and the, uh, strategy and philosophy and all of that.
And I'm guessing the compensation strategy will also include like, um, a, a maintenance strategy too. And then, um, not only maintenance for, um, the salary structure, but how we're going to continue to pay as that, um, as, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Rose said that there's other costs that go into it also, not just the salary too.
Yeah. And when we did the budgeting part of it, um, we budgeted the increase of the salary, we budgeted for the insurance and the Medicare and the workers' comp and all of that. That was all budgeted and accounted for as well.
And I guess just from a personal point of view, and, and, um, I think this is just, it's not necessarily something that's pertinent for the conversation right now, but I think that it's going to be an issue at some point down the road. Um, if we're going to approve a strategy moving forward, um, having in writing, uh, having how that maintenance plan is going to look and at what points in time or is the city going to address them, whether they're still okay or whether we need to address them because, you know, and I've said this several times over the past several years, the city of Atumalwabalo County, and maybe it's a Southern Iowa thing, I don't know. But the, the, the governing bodies have done just an absolutely atrocious job of keeping up with costs. And, and, uh, quite honestly, it's kept, it's kept those costs artificially low. And then we get into situations, you know, a prime example, I look at Water Works and, and, uh, the sewer and, and we don't tax at all because, hey, we got money. And then all of a sudden we have to look at 20% increase and, and we could have built that up over time. And I'd look at the salaries kind of the same way, um, where, you know, I know that there are some salaries that haven't been adjusted since the early 2000s, 2010s. And as a result, some employees, some past, some current have been kind of unfairly paid over the last several years as a result of people not wanting to take, take action. So I would really like to see in writing that plan of action moving forward.
Yeah, that's part of it. Absolutely.
Yeah. There is a maintenance component in the document itself?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was also saying not just the document, but having specific like on, like, um, he identified on year one, we're going to review these year two, like having that spelled out.
Yeah. That, that is part of it, right?
Yeah. Okay. Yep.
I mean, it's up to staff and council to fulfill that.
Right.
But it is at least in, it, it would be documented as to what that plan is. Like any good plan, you still have to pick it up off the shelf and, and follow through with it.
I would like to see before the next, uh, special meeting with, with Wassim saying like a figure from the franchise fees, this is how much is coming in. And after the study, how much will it be to get all the employees up to where their pay should be and the COLA? And then look at them two numbers. And then I think at a special meeting, because I'd hate to vote on something if we don't know that and we're trying to rush it too fast. I agree with Galloway though. We need to not just keep kicking it, but we need to see where we set too, to see how we can crunch the numbers.
And I guess, uh, I'm sorry to belabor this. I, I would also like to see what that two or three year projection on salaries is going to look like from finances. Well, that way, you know, we might have the money this year, but, but based on what we know for, for, uh, bond payoff and, and general debt obligations and capital improvements, how's that going to affect the cash flow? How's that going to affect the financial position of the city over the next couple of years? Does anybody have any further comments? Okay. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. We sure appreciate it.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Does anybody in the audience want to make any comments before we call for adjournment? Okay. Hearing none, I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Chris, take your role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:34. Thank you, everybody.